Welcome to this virtual forum for Linwood City Council Position 3, presented by the Linwood Chamber of Commerce and Linwood Today. My name is Linda Jones, CEO of the Linwood Chamber, and I'll be moderating this forum. Linwood Today publisher Teresa Whipple will serve as our timekeeper. Thank you, Teresa. Thanks to our sponsors, Edmunds College, James Russell P L L C, Certified Public Accountants and Business Advisors and Office Tech. I also want to thank Position 3 candidate Lisa Utter for participating in this event. Her opponent, Josh Binda, did not respond to our request to participate in the debates we were scheduling with all the candidates. In the interest of fairness, we are giving Ms. Utter a chance to respond to the questions. Before we get started, here are the ground rules. You will have two minutes to make an opening statement. Then I'll ask a series of questions, and you will be given two minutes to respond to every question. After the questions, you have one minute for a closing statement. Now Teresa, who is serving as our timekeeper, will demonstrate how she will notify you how much time you have left, holding up warnings for one minute, 30 seconds, and stop when your time is complete. Let's move on to the opening statement. You can go at any time, Lisa, and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for inviting me. I know that this is not exactly the format you had in mind, but I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Lisa Utter. I have been a longtime resident in Linwood, and I'm running right now for city council because during my, the three previous terms that I was on there, we, I was involved in the planning and the kind of vision for city, for the redevelopment of the community, of the city center and the arrival of light rail. And then I took a hiatus and did some other stuff. But this, now that light rail will be arriving in 2024, and this is a very exciting time for Linwood, and I want to make sure that some of the ideas that we had about making it the streets very vibrant and livable and the traffic patterns so that it did not, were, you know, that we had good public transit and also good roads, that we had a good services and we had affordable and inclusive community are available, you know, carry through into the new, into the actuality, into the actual decision-making that, that happens. After the 2008 recession, of course, those things ended. So I'm looking, my, my focus is on affordability, both housing, transportation, which is the second largest cost for most families, you know, and other essential services such as, such as the safety and law enforcement and, and public services and utilities and things like that. So that's what I'm looking for. And then inclusion, and then I really think we need to take major steps towards sustainability and addressing the climate, climate change. And, you know, we have a, a great place to start with that because of the arrival of light rail in Linwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to move into the first question. As Linwood prepares for a population boom with the arrival of Sound Transit's Linwood Link Light Rail, what do you say to longtime Linwood residents who fear they will be priced out of the city?
Well, I think that's, that's a very reasonable, very, even before the arrival. I mean, this, this last, this past year, the increase in house prices and housing in general has been amazing and, you know, in a, in a, in a very difficult way because wages have not kept up. So I think there are a couple of things. One is that we need to keep in mind that present residents should not suffer so that we have, so that we, you know, focus so hard on the future residents that we, that we don't pay attention to the needs and wants and, and expectations of the current residents. That's the first thing. We have obviously had a nationwide, but particularly in this region, there has not been enough housing built to accommodate the growth. And, and that needs to be addressed. And our current, you know, we've just adopted a housing plan that includes a lot of areas where there's more multifamily housing. And a lot of it you have been seeing being constructed right now. And I think we need to allow for some infall. And by that, I mean, we need to have development within neighborhoods and in your current residents, a lot of the current residents, at least 40% of the current residents, 40 or 50%, live that does not completely disrupt the scale of their neighborhoods. So I have been a big proponent, both in the past, I was an advocate for looking at the accessory dwelling unit and the detached dwelling units. And I think that those offer a real opportunity for increasing affordability because small, small property owners that rent out a, an mother-in-law apartment or own a small condo, you know, make up 50% of the affordable housing in the country right now. And the other thing is that it allows for a single, for a source of revenue for people who, I'm sorry, who own their homes.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
There is a belief that some council members in Linwood, excuse me, align themselves with political parties, even though the city's elected positions are nonpartisan, and that council members are listening to outside interests rather than their own constituents. Do you align your views with a political party? And if so, what do you say to those who believe it hurts your ability to represent all residents in your decision-making?
So I am a known Democrat. I am aligned with a political party because I, partly because I am very involved in politics, but also because the, the city councils and stuff are kind of the, the training grounds for people who go into the legislature and stuff. So I think it's quite reasonable for council members, even if, even though it is a nonpartisan position, to be aligned with a party and, or to be connected with a party. And I think almost all of the council members are. And you will find that both the Republican and the Democratic parties, as well as other parties and other organizations endorse candidates. So I, I don't think that that's unreasonable. I think that you, I, you will find that I have worked with Democrats and Republicans and not, and not pretty non-political people on the council before. I have a record of, of working with all, with people with a lot of different views. And I think, I guess I would just, I would, think that, that it is also our job, just as it is our job to listen to the, to the chamber, and many of whom, those business owners don't live in Linwood, to li, to listen to other organizations that are interested in what's going on, both, you know, locally, regionally, and statewide.
Thank you. What is your approach to collecting input from residents and incorporating it into your decision-making? Can you provide an example of where your initial inclination on a decision was changed by constituent, by constituents' feedback?
Um, I can. I think one of the examples is a mobile home park here in the city that eventually was purchased by Hasco. I did not think that that was very likely. I've been, I mean, I have a couple of examples related to, to mobile home parks, but there was the one that was purchased by Hasco. And there was a lot of input from the residents and a lot of fear from the residents in that, in that case. And I did not think it would be possible for Hasco to pull that off. But we were, the council as a whole was very supportive with that. There was another mobile home park over on Highway 99 and 188 that closed. And it was, I think it was premature because that land is still laying fallow 15 years later. But we did, you know, there were, there was a lot of fear from residents there, and that there wasn't the same kind of organization. But we did, I did manage, I mean, the council as a whole, and I feel like I took that, some leadership role in this, managed to approach them and get the, the owners to pay for the destruction of the homes. One of the things that people don't understand is that most mobile homes are not movable after they've been in a, in a park for as long a time. And then if the park closes, the, the owners of the units are responsible for destroying their own homes as well as for the cost of moving and stuff. And we managed to move some, make the connections that allowed some of the residents to move into the, the Hasco park. So that would be things where I'd, you know, was able to do that.
Thank you. As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide a needed check and balance for the executive branch mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it?
Well, I think, so it's, I think it's very important for the council members to work together and to appoint a council president that has a strong, you know, presence and, and personality to, 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 to work with the administration, since that is the person who sets the agenda. And, you know, the, the administration wants certain things to go through and is responsible for the, like, the timely and consistent operation of the city. And the council is making the policy decisions and, and doing a lot of the future planning. So I think the important thing is that you reach out to your council members and talk to them, not sequentially, so that you get around the, the rules, because there are lots of, you know, open public meetings rules. But, you know, that you know and discuss their, their interests and their, what, what it is they're looking for. And I think it's important that we do have the, the council, the council workshops and stuff to do, to do that. And I think the other thing is that the rules, which are, I think, we have fairly good rules that, that allow for a strong response to the administration if there are issues. We've had problems in the past, but we've had mayor council issues where, you know, count, the rules have allowed the, the council to, to move forward and make some comments and, and kind of rein in some, some actions, such as the kind of premature purchase of the Rodeo Hotel, for example, for, which was the, the administration had moved forward in a way that didn't really suit, wasn't really a possible solution to the problem that we were talking about with homeless pop, homeless families with school-aged children.
Thank you. The Linwood City Council recently voted to approve a $69 million community justice center, expanding the city's police department, jail, and municipal courts. The project has been planned for years, but many who do not follow local news only recently found out about it. How do you plan to inform the community about the project? And what plans do you have for keeping residents surprised of other major decisions that impact the city?
Yeah, so that was, that was unfortunate that, and I think that in most cases, I mean, there was a lot of, there was public meetings and, and an invitation to comment on it early in March. And that's when I made my comments about the, the changing nature of policing and criminal justice and, and whether we needed to review and update our, our plans based on that. And it turns out that that's what happened, although it was an unfortunate event that caused people to really respond and, and question that, that, the construction bonds for that, for that facility. I think there's no question that people do, you need to highlight the big rocks like this for the community because that is not the kind of stuff that they're paying attention to. And these are the things that are really costly for a city and really important. So it's important to, I think, what we could do better is not just present, you know, this is, these are the plans that are being developed, but ask people for some of the philosophical or assumptions or, or around plans like that. You know, do we want to be a, a, a community that has a facility that rents out and, and essentially provides that service to the other surrounding cities or not? Is that something we want to do? That's the kind of thing that I don't really think that we presented well to the community. And, and although we do do regular community surveys, that kind of broad thing with context is important.
Thank you. The city of Linwood was allocated $10.9 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to be paid over two years. So far, the city has spent $882,000 to fill some vacant city staff positions, make technology improvements for streaming public meetings online, and purchase police-worn body cameras. How else should the city spend the federal relief funds?
So I think, um, I think that, that increasing the, the availability and the, and the quality of online meeting stuff was, was critically important, particularly during this pandemic. I think that's very pandemic-worthy. I think we need to focus on what builds a resilient community. So that means addressing those that are really suffering in the economic downturn and in the, the housing crunch that we have going on. So maybe, you know, reducing the number of people who are, who are living on our streets and things like that, but also in supporting our small businesses. I think small businesses have really been hurt. I mean, the number that have closed down is, is heartbreaking. So I think that, you know, those are two things. The other things that I would, I would hope to do is that we look towards the future and do put some of it towards, towards making the city more sustainable.
Thank you.
Your electric, I'm sorry, did I, am I on time?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were through. My mistake.
Yep, no, I made a pause there. You know, with increasing the, the electric car grid stuff and looking at tree canopies, because we did have our first, our first summer of really high heat, and, you know, maybe changing roof color, you know, that kind of thing after, after taking care of the needs that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. How will you ensure the critical needs of those who are homeless in Linwood be met without enabling Seattle-style issues such as public camping, trash-along streets, and related public safety concerns?
Well, as you probably know, I am, I am the chair of the committee that runs the Cold Weather Shelter, and I've been involved with that for almost a decade now. I, I, this is an incredibly tough policy issue connected with homelessness, mental illness, and substance abuse. And as we know, we have an opioid epidemic. I think the critical things are, one, that we try and address the housing issue in, in as many different and varied ways as possible, and that we advocate for that at the national level, that there's money for that, and at the state level. And then that we encourage affordable housing, knowing whether, I think we need to really be looking at community land trust as a long-term solution, but making the, you know, increasing the housing within the city. And then I think, you know, we need to be on top of things, like garbage stuff. It's been, I mean, it is, it is challenging to not drive through Seattle and, and just fresh by how much, how much garbage there is. And, you know, because people produce garbage just by living. And, and when they have to live on the streets, then it, you know, it becomes a huge problem. So I think that that's a critical thing to do, like, on top of that, not allowing that to get out of hand. But it needs to be a regional solution, obviously, and even a national solution at this point.
Thank you. Describe your experience working collaboratively with other jurisdictions to address regional issues and name one regional project you would like to see the city of Linwood develop with other jurisdictions.
So I have, I, I served 10 years on the Community Transit Board because transportation is kind of a primary interest of mine. I worked with Sound Transit and Puget Sound Regional Council on planning for the Linwood Transit Center remodel and the, and the planning for light rail to come here. So I think I've served on most of the, a lot of county boards and including, you know, the community development block grants and stuff. I, I think that what we really need, I don't know if there's a particular, the project, which is not like a bill, a single building, is the, is, is addressing climate change, because I just think that that's so critical. And I think it is kind of an existential crisis for our children. Starting to talk about children who have real fears about their future in recognition of what's going to happen. So that would be the focus.
Thank you. What role should the city council play in supporting BIPOC residents and ensuring that Linwood is a welcoming city to its increasingly diverse population?
I think we need to focus on outreach for, for that. And, you know, when I was on the council, I helped write the grant that eventually led to the establishment of the Diversity Commission and really focused on, focused on how we do outreach and, and on the importance of doing outreach and, and making sure that, that all, we're listening to all the citizens. So I think it's important that we make sure that we have full, you know, that we treat all of our, our neighborhoods fairly. And that's going to be more important as we, as we look at, as we have different development patterns and, and a higher number of, of residents. It's also, I think, important that we have representation on the council. And I recognize that there's some irony in that, given that I'm running against a person of color, a very young person of color. We definitely offer some diversity of counsel and work in this thing. But I, I think experience also counts. And I, but I do think we should be mentoring and, and appointing people and, and bringing, you know, supporting people in running and, and that light. And I think we need to be constantly searching for the impediments to equity because it's not only opportunity, but it's recognizing that, oh, not only, when, oops, not only do we, you know, for example, it was, when we started talking about this, someone had to bring it to our attention that all the slots for some of the fields got filled up and the Hispanic leads, like, weren't even on the mailing list to be, you know, recognized that, that these things were coming up. So it's, it's a matter of reaching out and letting them know, but also identifying where it is we are not communicating.
Thank you. If elected, what will be your spending priorities in the next budget?
So, um, obviously, we want, I mean, at base, we need to maintain good public services that provide for health, safety, and, and and the recreation and, and life of people in this, this community. So, you know, transportation, making sure that we have a strong response to any perceived or dangers, recognizing that there are a lot of people in crisis in this community that need services. Those are things. And I think, you know, those human services are, are based at the county and state level, but we need to, to be engaged as well. I think cities in King County have certainly moved towards that direction, and there are other cities around here that recognize that, you know, safety involves a lot. And if you are perpetually in crisis, you, you need, you need some services from the community. Frankly, that's why I think we pay taxes, is to make us all so safe and, and healthy and well. So I think I may have strayed from, from the thing, which is my, my focus, but it's, I mean, good public services. And then, you know, I think addressing the, the future issues, which right, right now we've got, and we will have for some time into the future, have affordable housing as a big, big issue in growth. But looking past that to, to the, making our, our community sustainable. As you increase that many people, the population as much as is planned, it's going to be a real balancing act.
Thank you. Defiant affordable housing, using your definition of affordable, and give an example of a successful project in a similar city where it has worked.
Well, oh dear. So I think that, um, let's see, so I think it's, Salt Lake City is, is the first city that comes to mind that has really operated on a first, a housing-first model. And they have, that have been fairly successful, although I know some Salt Lake City residents who, who don't feel that that's been as successful as they had hoped. I think it's always a challenge. I think it needs to, I think Seattle has done a few projects that are pretty innovative in terms of housing first. But that's much, a much bigger, and they have a much larger pool of money than, than we do. I think in this size city, I mean, there's, there's a good one down in, in Montlake Terrace. There's a, three, several good projects where they've managed to partner with Hasco. And, and I think there's been some partnering with one, some developer, and I can't remember the name. But I think the, the critical elements are that it have long-term funding and that there'd be a long-term plan. I, I'm very skeptical about the tax, the, the tax things that allow for like a 10-year development time because I, I think our, our problems are bigger than that, and that is not, not the way to go.
Thank you. Since the council has returned to holding its public meetings remotely in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, what ideas do you have for ensuring that city council members remain accessible to the public?
Yeah, well, that, that's a good question, although a lot of candidates are doing, doing remote things as well as some kind of outside, in-person things. I, and the, the other problem that we have is that there, the pandemic has really made clear that we have a huge digital divide. And the school district really found that out in a harsh way, and it's had to do a lot of creative stuff. So I think it's important for us to support access and the tools that make access possible for all citizens. And I think that, that council members should be available to, to chat with people online. I know, I know that right now, there's a, you know, you can, you can send them emails or you can leave them messages on the city system, but you can't, you don't really, nobody has really planned regular kind of unavailable, and it's an open really, nobody has really planned regular kind of, I'm available and it's an open public meeting, or even, you know, I've scheduled this time for Zoom meetings and I'm happy to, to, to talk with people. I find that a ton of actual citizen communication takes part, place in the, the library and the grocery store, and that has kind of disappeared for a lot, in a lot of ways during this pandemic. So I think maybe we need to put some more thought into that, and I haven't, I don't have any immediate answers to that.
Thank you. As more development occurs in Linwood, it also means the removal of trees from our city. Do you have any ideas for protecting the city's tree canopy?
Yeah, I think, I think we do, I mean, there's, there is a lot of tree loss with, with, with a lot of this development. And I, I think, I thought we, we put a tree ordinance in when, when I was on the council, and it seemed to be good, but I don't see that we're saving a lot of the big trees that, that we'll plant. So I'm, I would need to review that, because I think that that is part of it. I know that it is a real strain to try and develop around big trees. And we have to, sometimes that, that's not even possible. But I do think that tree planting, I think our tree, our tree voucher program is very, is, is a really good thing and is something that should be encouraged. I also think that we need to, we need to have kind of tree care stuff, because a lot of the new developments will put in trees, but there's really no care plan and they're not, they're not growing into the, the full, their full height and capacity.
Thank you. This is the last question. Tell voters why you would be the best choice for city council.
I think that I am the best choice in, in this particular race, because I have experience, I have a lot of knowledge about housing affordability and transportation, and I have a broad and commitment to this community. I mean, I was a, I, I show up for a lot of different things, and I'm connected to a lot of groups in the community. I work with the homeless community. I am attached to the schools, even now, even though my children have graduated, I, I'm involved in some of that stuff. I'm involved with onages and seniors. I know a lot of people in the, in the community from my time on the council and from my time in the community. And I think there's an importance of just, of, of showing up and, and of having built a, a base of, of relationships in the community. And so I've already, you know, and I've seen it change, so I know what, what people are talking about when they are talking about what it was like when they first moved here. I also have lived in places where, where transit is just accepted as part of the background, and it changes the way that people plan their lives. And I think that that is an important thing to know as you, as, as we approach this new time, where we have light tran, light rail, but we also have a bus system that will need to be reconfigured to, you know, address the transportation needs of this area of the community. And I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. So now it's time for your closing statement, and that is one minute, please. And you will receive timekeeper warnings for 30 seconds and stop.
Okay. Okay. Well, I, I really appreciate this opportunity to talk to the community, and I thank you for your work and your work, you know, presenting us and also in the community itself. I think that I am the best candidate right now because of my background, because of my longevity in the community, because of my connections to the community, and my commitment to making this community affordable in all, you know, for, for people and avail, and enhancing the, the, the quality of life for people who live in this community with good services, vibrant places, to be good transportation, and that we, I think I end forward looking in terms of reading and attending things and recognition of the kinds of problems we're going to be facing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you again, city council candidate Lisa Uter for participating in this forum today, presented by the Linwood Chamber of Commerce and Linwood Today. Much appreciation to our sponsors, Edmonds College, James Russell P L L C, Certified Public Accounting Accountants and Business Advisors, and Office Tech. A reminder that the ballots for the November 2nd general, general election are scheduled to be mailed on October 14th, so be sure to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.